Item number 5.2 is a study session.
The more exciting is the other topic.
Well, I'm not sure about that. I hear you have next to you. All right, Commissioner Cox, Commissioner Anderson May, we're going to get started. Item 5.2 is a study session on residential architecture. We had lots of interest in looking at the types of developments that are coming through and what kind of opportunities might the commission, the design review have to expand what we see as projects come through Mountain View. So I understand we have a presentation from our consultant, Lisa.
Yeah, a combination presentation tonight. As Chair Kimar noted, the residential design study session with a particular focus on the higher intensity developments that we've been seeing previously in change areas and individual projects. This item's come about as the chair started to touch on because you might have noticed that we've had a significant amount of residential development in Mountain View. And particularly in the last year or so, we have heard during review of individual projects from EPC and council as well as some other folks that there are some common concerns around the design of those individual projects. So tonight's meeting is an opportunity for EPC to discuss, in some ways at a broader level, because we're not talking about any one project, but also hopefully some greater specificity about, you know, the concerns that the community and EPC has with the design of recent developments, in particular, any design principles or components of residential architecture that have not perhaps been effectively achieved in recent developments, but more importantly, to try to narrow in on some of the critical objectives that you have for future development. So again, those are principles or components of the design that you think we need to really focus on. The rest of this presentation, as you'll see on the screen, it isn't two parts. The first is kind of a primer on your residential design as concisely as possible, so not sort of a magnum of focus, followed by some additional graphics that we hope will help support the EPC discussion. Before jumping into that rest of the presentation, I do want to highlight just a couple of things that were discussed in the staff report, which is viewed as kind of like a corollary document. And first off, you know, design review in this community, like many communities, is based on the adopted policies and standards and design guidelines that we have. And so what tonight's input is helpful in doing is to provide staff and community members who are here tonight some insight into how EPC thinks that the city staff and DRC could better implement that direction that we have and the design policy goals listed, sort of our high-level summary of a few critical components of the documents that we have. And lastly, just briefly to highlight, again, at a high level, we feel like we've heard from EPC, city council members and others about some of the areas of concern and that we hope your discussion tonight will help us clarify. And with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Rick Williams from Bermuda Williams Pollock. You know, Rick, actually, in his professional life, both has designed buildings in the city, but also has helped us prepare many of the design regulations that we use. So he's worn a couple of different hats. He's joined by David Savalbaro, who has also designed buildings in the city, but more importantly to me at least, sits on the development review committee and helps, is an incredible help in reviewing the designs that come through our process. So with that, I'll give you Rick.
Thank you very much, commissioners. We, I have worked in Mountain View now for over about 20 years from the downtown plan through the El Camino Real, Precise Plan. I've worked on specific project reviews as well. And occasionally, when there have been jumps in development, we have come to a planning commission or city council and given kind of this primer, discuss the issues. And it's always good to kind of look back a little bit and then be able to look forward. I'm going to only pander for one second here to all of you and say that I have the advantage of working in many communities throughout the Bay Area. Many planning commissions, many city councils go through many designer review processes. And most cities look at Mountain View as being a prime example of how to do it. They think of the developments that occur in Mountain View as being very high quality. You have a very, and all of my staff will say, you have a very rigorous design review process, you have a very rigorous development review process. And so what comes out of that, generally speaking, is thought of in the Bay Area as kind of a model for quality development. So sometimes when you get very focused on what's happening right on your street, it sounds like, gee, you know, this is really very complex. But it's also very positive in that when you look from 30,000 feet, you have the model that many cities, and I have been to other planning commissions that have said, why don't we get the good quality developments that they get in Mountain View?
We appreciate the compliment.
So I want you to understand that in this perspective. But there's always a room for improvement, if you can go.
Can I ask you for just one second? You said you worked on a couple of projects recently in Mountain View?
Seventeen oh one El Camino Real is one, and we have a couple of others. We do a lot of affordable housing, so other developments are coming for you in the future. So we are listening intently. We think of, when we look at Mountain View, one of the things we've heard for many, many, many years is that we want our residential developments to appear residential, commercial developments to appear commercial. And some of the primers to residential design that we've used are listed above here. And I just point out that breaking down the scale into multiple buildings, organizing the buildings into a base, a middle and a top have been basic fundamental principles that you've had on many, 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 for many, many, many years. You've really worked on stepping the buildings back at the taller levels and against your single-family homes and the lower-density developments behind, for example, the El Camino Real. And having entries on the streets, rhythm and articulation, strong retail frontages and a variety of character and a variety of materials, high-quality detailing, having a lot of visual interest has been really the principles that you've been standing on. This is still, many years later, you find this in many other cities' design guidelines, the examples of these developments, particularly this one along Castro, as a mixed-use residential development. It has a strong base. It has vertical articulation. It has a strong top to it as well, as well as some of your other residential developments with strong landscape features, entries along the street, hiding of the parking. All of those have been principles that have really been highlighted within Mountain View. You also have, within the areas of development that are adjacent to or in established areas, really focused on having those developments' character fit in with the neighborhoods. Everything from the residential character that's a little taller along the street across from the transit center, but it also steps down in the back along the single-family neighborhoods. And it has what you can clearly see as a very residential character on a development such as this. And these are all good examples that we illustrate and talk to all the time.
Comedians was grinning in the background.
It's like their brochure.
So then when you, and I have to say that I don't know everybody who did them. We didn't do any of these developments, so I'm picking them and taking a risk. There have been many, there was no development for a while during the recession. The El Camino Real Precise Plan was completed. Many projects during the down years, sites were purchased, projects were proposed. And so you have seen an inordinate amount of development along the El Camino Real, particularly in the last few years. One of the things that makes this area unique is it's more commercially oriented, so it doesn't have that residential, the same type of residential character. It has a little bit more of a commercial style to it because it is in a context where it's more commercial. But those developments that do back up on the residential neighborhoods do have more of a residential character as well. And you can see, I think this was an image which I felt was really strong, you can really see how this development steps down to what is a single-family house adjacent to it. Entries are a big portion, and one of the things that we feel has been a little bit difficult is having the residential entries on El Camino Real. There's still some uncomfortable quality about having individual unit entries onto the street there, which is something to discuss, we think. The building, the development over at Moffett Boulevard is really another unique project. It illustrates the variety of multiple buildings in the development. It also notes that along the Boulevard, the character has one kind of larger, more commercial orientation, though still a residential breakdown in scale. While if you go to the back street, you can notice that it is much more residential in character, and it has those stoops and entries along it that the city has always requested and illustrated. They have some more dramatic architectural styles in some areas, and then it becomes more residential and again, steps down to the lower residential neighborhoods. All of these are consistent features that you see throughout all of these developments. Other developments along El Camino have really been challenged with this predominant issue of the entryways and some of them, the entryways that are more shared are larger in scale and I think are handled well. The individual entries are a challenge to get the development community to want to do those. And these particular developments that have come up this last generation, we do feel a combination of during, having them be designed during the drought, having them be on tight sites, there's maybe not quite enough breathing room for quality landscaping that has suffered a little bit because it was partially put in during the drought. And so you see less, you see less landscaping along some of these areas. And the utility requirements on these projects are becoming more and more impactful to the landscape. And so as you put in transformers, vaults, electrical telephone and all the equipment that's hidden underneath those, as well as stormwater management systems and things like that, you're finding that it's a challenge to the landscape if we don't give them enough room to breathe, so to speak. When you get to San Antonio Center and the developments there, they have actually skipped a scale. They've gone up one more step from El Camino Real, and some of the people earlier mentioned the seven stories, sticking in wood construction. That is really what you're seeing, the maximum, the maximum heights that you can do these developments in. What you have seen with some of these developments is also that you're taking a retail center, maybe it wasn't the strongest retail center, it's become more vibrant with residential development, and you've been able to get some very nice open spaces, which are a community benefit and a gathering space within them. But I do understand where people are concerned with the ability to transform a retail center into what is almost trying to be a portion of a downtown with streets and walkways and sidewalks and acting like a street, and it's half a street and half a downtown and half a suburban shopping center. You're getting a mix of things, and in some instances, it's very strong, and in other instances, such as in this area, other instances, it might be a little bit weaker and more difficult to meet all the objectives. And so when you get to that next scale, which you don't, won't see in the, along the El Camino so much, but you might see in the North Bay Shore in the future, you have to pay attention to how those developments occur and think about our design strategy on those to make sure that they fit in with your desires for residential development. I mentioned, there are a number of issues that you're going to be grappling with in the coming years. This is a good diagram of what is happening in building codes today. For many, many years, most of your high-density housing was built in type V construction. It was allowed to be four stories over a parking podium, so it was a total of five stories. And usually you had your parking podium subgrade. So now with type 3A construction, you can have two stories of concrete, type 1 construction, and then five stories of wood frame on top of it. You can have residential or commercial within these two floors as well, and then your parking can still be subgrade. Now, that's seven stories. It can be 85 feet in height, 75 feet to the top finished floor before you change life safety codes. And so you're seeing bigger buildings in certain areas, and you will see bigger buildings where your floor area ratio doesn't control it. You just had a discussion about 2.5 to 3.5. That's that area there. When you're in, along the El Camino where you have 1.65, 1.85, maybe two, you're still going to be able to control it based on your height and your floor area ratio. So the building code will, and the cost of going up to that eighth floor of concrete that you heard in the last conversation, is really impactful, and that's what begins to limit your heights, et cetera, rather than your FAR, which is what's limiting the heights in most of your residential developments today. The other two things that you're going to be looking at in the future are modular construction. There's a big event today at a new modular factory up in Vallejo. They will be, they will go into operation and be bringing modules to Google and other locations. The nice thing about that for the community, it is going to reduce the construction time because I think we're all getting tired of construction.
I would stand firm.
So there is constant construction going on, and it shortens the timeframe on a project. It could shorten it from four to five to six months. But it does have other restrictions and it does impact the architecture. Two other elements. Exterior, the exterior surfaces of buildings today, because of this, the larger buildings, they're up taller, rain and water impact the exterior skin more. There's more liability on these large projects for water intrusion. And what is happening is that they're making more sophisticated exterior building systems, and you're seeing more panelized systems going up. And panelized systems affects the aesthetics of a building. You're seeing, even the stucco systems that you're seeing are more complex than the old stucco systems. It's raising the cost of construction. But panelized systems will start to turn things into contemporary buildings more than more traditional-style buildings. And then the only other example I wanted to show you was rooftops are precious now. They're precious for rooftop open space, but as the legislation has just passed recently, we're going to be seeing solar panels on almost every building in the future. We're saving all of that space for solar panels. It's going to be a good thing for sustainability and energy efficiency and energy creation. But if you can see on a project like this, there aren't a lot of extra spaces, and so you're not seeing a lot of sloped roofs. You're seeing a lot of flat roofs at these higher densities. And those spaces are going to be open space, utilities and solar panels for the coming future.
If I could add just one thing as far as factors affecting design, and this isn't necessarily something we capture in a design guideline, because most of our design guidelines seek to allow architectural flexibility, is that, you know, the real estate market, what people are wanting to buy or rent is a factor, if not on the city side, then on the developer's side, as far as, you know, what they feel like they can market, and it's going to be popular and easy to rent for itself.
So one of the things I wanted to do, I mentioned that other communities are having some of these same conversations. We're going to very quickly run through, so you see images from a couple of other cities. I'm going to make only a few comments, very brief, so we can get through this quickly and have, you can have the conversation. But I wanted to highlight that there are, this conversation is going on in many communities, if we can run through these. So example, Union City BART, traditional design. It's a big building. Elements of it are handled maybe less successfully, and it, having all the articulation in a more traditional style doesn't reduce the scale of the building substantially, and they had trouble with entries along the street as well. Also in Union City, actually on the other side of the BART station, so that was the first project, this is the second, they've gone to a more contemporary style. They do have commercial ground floor. There is some patios above, and then you can see the vertical articulation. The metal panel balconies, et cetera, are creating a little bit more of an industrial appearance, but they are clearly residential character elements that are in this, in this portion of the building. However, it is very different in character from the previous. Palo Alto has tried to do a combination of some contemporary elements, some traditional tops, a strong base. They do have some entries, which I think this is a good example of a project that has all the elements, kind of threw them all together, didn't quite create a nice, nice organized building, and the construction isn't nearly the quality that you typically see in Mountain View, but a nice general building. In Fremont, this has just opened recently. One of the other problems with residential developments is that they are having a hard time doing good retail, retail spaces. There isn't as much need for retail. Everybody wants a lot of retail in their, in the developments as mixed use, but they're having a hard time coming up with good retail street frontages, as you remembered you had on your Castro Street project. They have traditional architectural character, although in some elements, it sort of becomes kind of clunky and unresolved in certain pieces. Sunnyvale has really pushed the limit on some of their developments. They have stoops here that enter off of a small street. You've got retail spaces along the street here. Here you clearly have a strong base, and then you kind of have a middle, but only somewhat a top. You have the elements of a balcony, except there isn't a balcony in the Juliet balcony form. They tried very hard. You should really go and kick those buildings a little bit. You will find that, when you look at them, gee, they kind of look okay from a distance, but when you get closer, the construction isn't really very nice. And so I don't think they're going to stand the test of time. They are concrete, they do hurt. Here's another example, and this was actually a pretty successful development at San Jose, along Cahill, along the Avalon. You can see a commercial, mixed-use, retail frontage, traditional materials and elements. And then it steps down as the density of the neighborhood has a little bit taller buildings, but shorter than the main commercial street, and then it steps down into smaller buildings. So it's taken, and it was actually built just after some of your Mountain View developments. It took a lot of cues. Actually, I know for a fact that they were told, why don't you go look at the Mountain View projects and you'll see what we're talking about? And it occurred somewhat along there. So this is a pretty simple building organization. Some use of brick and material has actually really warmed it up well with Neil. This is in, Redwood City has taken the next leap in scale. They are as tired as many others are with the constant construction in their downtown. Here is a city that has allowed for those two-story ground floors with one, two, three, four, five stories above. Some of the buildings are fairly well-composed. They're large. They do have a base, a middle and a top, and they are working very, very hard with quality materials to try to articulate the buildings to break down the scale, but we have to admit, they are not small buildings. They're in their downtown, and those are the recent ones. Now, they also have some new buildings under construction that aren't finished yet that have step backs along El Camino. So as you see those occur, you will get the sense of what those step backs at the top three floors will appear like, and those will be done in a few months. But also in Mountain View, everything isn't modern. This was actually the first El Camino Real building done about 14 years ago. And you can see, it's a huge building. It has the base, the middle, the top. It's very large. It has all of the articulations. It has all the residential elements. In the city of Redwood City is considered an okay project. It was the first one trying to do mixed use along the El Camino. But a more recent project, everyone has felt, isn't quite as successful at creating some character and quality, and being traditional didn't solve some of the other issues it had from an architectural standpoint. But, so this one is a little more successful than this one is. It has a lot of the same elements, and then the other projects are more contemporary in nature. Although, here is a Redwood City project that is very, it really fits in well. It has a strong character, strong traditional elements to it. It steps down along some elements of the street. This is where the market issue comes up a little bit. A big component of this is senior housing. So it was looked at as being traditional was a positive for the marketing relative to attracting seniors, and so that was a big supportive element to it, whereas a lot of the other newer developments are really attracting people that are becoming 20 and 30 years old to a greater extent. And so they are looking for another successful project, also in Redwood City. This is the taller five stories over the parking. It doesn't have the retail. I actually think that with its size, it's on a busy street. It has the entry porches. It has a little bit more landscaping than you had on some of those El Camino projects. You can see that that really helped them create the stoops and the entries. It has a nice vertical feature, and just generally speaking, when you look at this facade, it looks organized, thought out. It has all of the key elements. It has a top, a middle, it has corner elements, and it has a strong base of pedestrian orientation. And though it's a contemporary building, it has all of those traditional elements that you're looking for in residential design, and I think a good model that people can learn from. So with those, we have a little bit of food for thought. We've kind of analyzed some of these. You've gotten some initial thoughts of mine, but we wanted to kind of discuss, highlight a couple of elements for you to consider. We think that it's still important to have a variety of styles and emphasize variation in the development, maybe from building to building more so. And you can see that you can be successful whether it's traditional or contemporary, and then some of them are contemporary with traditional elements. This development is part of a development in San Francisco. It has a corner. It has bays. It has a corner storefront, and it's a little more contemporary in its appearance. We feel that the importance is really in the pedestrian orientation. As you're driving by, you get a sense of what the buildings are. It's really how it is when you're walking by that's critical of the quality of a project. And whether you're doing a commercial development and you want to have a commercial character, these are from your general plan and other design guidelines, or residential development, and having that residential character along it. We feel that that is a place where you should really focus attention in design review on projects, because you can have projects that don't have entries, maybe are lacking a little bit of landscape because they're very tight in their configuration. Others maybe are more generous. And you don't actually always have to have landscaping to have good sense of activity and entries along the street as well. So it's not all about landscaping. It's about that balance of activity, interest, quality materials, connection to the street and all of those elements. Kind of reaffirming, reaffirming or just, or whether or not reaffirming retail frontages is important, I think that that is something that you're seeing in a variety of different projects, some being more successful than others, as well as those residential entries that we spoke to. And the types of materials and the quality of material that you have on the base of the buildings is generally where you should think about spending the money as far as having people get a sense of the quality of a project. Because there are many materials and there are very many high-quality materials that you can use along the street, in the building. They're going to last a long time, but in the systems that they're putting on these larger buildings, they're very expensive. They put a lot into them, but they do begin to dictate the character of a building somewhat in the way they're detailed and the way the materials are placed on the building. And again, I think that the principle that I mentioned a couple of times, having And again, I think that the principle that I mentioned a couple of times, having a strong base, whether it's a residential base or a commercial base, different ways of having a top, whether it's just a heavy sun shade such as these, whether it's a real roof as these, or even another roof, which we'll see many less of. This one's up in Portland because of the ability to be able to put solar on all of the other roofs. And this is from the El Camino Real guidelines, stepping back, having a roof, having a real roof form, corner element, commercial base, residential base, and vertical articulations are what you see on most of your projects, and whether or not they're achieving all your goals is really something to discuss. And although I'm an architect, I love landscaping, one of the things is, is that new developments have to have time to have their landscaping grow up. You want to have it be lush enough and to really provide that landscape character and quality that I think has actually been a tradition of Mountain View. You've seen it in other developments in the past. It makes for a nice residential character. This will be, this happens to be taken two weeks ago, so what, spring hasn't sprung yet. But other developments have that character and quality, and I think you can achieve that in your project. It might take a few more feet of landscaping to really be successful, but I think that that's something that we should maybe think about reemphasizing and guiding principles as the designer review looks at it, because eventually all the trees grow up and hide the buildings, and you don't even notice they're there. That's okay by me, but it really makes for a good quality neighborhood.
So if you'd like to me for more information, you guys. The staff report highlighted, you know, three areas for potential EPC input. You're welcome to disregard them, but we recommend at least trying to break it into those three pots individually, you know, trying to clarify. If you have any clarifications to make on, you know, the concerns from previous to express. And I'm not going to run through all of the ones that are listed there, but I do have prepared slides for sort of each of those key questions, three key questions that we can run through individually. And I can give a very quick intro for each one if that would be helpful to try to clarify what we sort of are hoping we might hear from EPC. And although David was quiet for the presentation, we are all three available for questions or to sort of join in the conversation.
No, but I can say, I'm very interested in hearing what your impressions are of the latest developments that's going on. Yeah, we try to work with what was given by these guys. You know, we don't always throw it out wholeheartedly, because sometimes we say, oh, boy, this is really bad, but we try to work with what we're given, and I think they've done a good job in responding, and it's always seeing how they respond to our comments. We see if we can prolong their agony of going through ERC, but we try to make it a progressive thing where we build upon the last thing. But I'm interested in hearing what you're saying, because it bothers me that some people are thinking, and I probably agree, that some of the projects are looking the same. You know, and I, you know, we're always trying, good design comes from the context and responding to context, so nothing should be the same, because sites are all different, so they should have a character that's developed from the site. But I'd love to hear what you're thinking recently. This modern or contemporary versus traditional stuff, sometimes we hear, you know, oh, they just want it more traditional. Yeah, we can live with that, but I think Rick's pointed out, you can do both, traditional and contemporary. But it's about articulations, the depths, it's the cutouts, it's everything. It's when we get the blank facades and lack of articulation. And then the last thing is about materiality. You know, we're tired of seeing big stucco boxes, but you know, that's what they start with. So you know, nowadays, they're reminding us how much construction has gone up, but there's different ways to skin this, and it's the proportions that you use. So Billy, I don't have much more to add, but I'm very anxious to hear what you said.
So starting off with the first question, if you don't mind me repeating here, you know, I try to put it in the framework of a question that we're used to seeing, so the question is, does the agency have any additional input to clarify or modify what we've characterized as the concerns that we've heard about recent developments in Mountain View? And you know, I think the confirmation side is probably a straightforward thing to address, but if there is any narrowing down of like, you know, what it is, you know, that feels blocky about buildings that you feel like you can't articulate, now's an opportunity to do so.
Oh, yes. So would it be better to take public comments upfronts?
Why don't we start with public comments?
Why don't we start with public comments, and then we can bring it back to the conversation soon? And if you could try and fill out a card either before or after, but we'd like to hear what you say and then...
Well, I have a whole bunch of things written down, but you've covered so much of what I guess I was concerned with, and it's true that as you go through...
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Carol Whittaker. I'm from the Eichler community, so I am fine with contemporary architecture. It doesn't bother me at all. I don't think it has to be traditional. I think really for me, and for many of the people that I've talked to, it really does get down to walkability and how friendly is it to walk down the street? And as you walk through the community, you'll go through hotspots where there are no mature trees, and it's miserable, and then you'll hit a patch of, I mean, literally, the temperature, you can feel the drop when you go under a larger tree. And where those trees are are critical. It's not that they're next to the building, it's that they keep you away from the street, particularly on El Camino. No one's going to walk on El Camino right now, and I think, I don't know if that's a lost cause or not, but right now I have, there's no reason for me to walk from Castro to San Antonio. Why would I do that? So, I mean, it's, you wouldn't. I mean, it's just, there's nothing that invites you to walk down the street. The canopies are pretty miserable. I don't even think it's necessary, the buildings, because if I were going to build high-density ownership, you know, rental spaces, I would want them on El Camino, absolutely. But I, so I think that's an issue. I think also when we talk about materials, I less want to go to traditional, because that does mean I get a stucco something with some sort of interesting wink to historical that looks ridiculous, and it looks like it will age badly, it looks like it will be very sorry we ever built it. So I think embracing contemporary is fine. I think that there's a way to warm the contemporary with skins, as you mentioned. Maybe those skins have an artwork element to it. Maybe it's punched metal, some sort of scrim. I've seen some of that in Palo Alto, where it's a punched metal skin that comes just off the building with plants around it that really makes it look interesting. Artwork. And again, you know, that whole idea of, I want to keep walking because there's something that's enticing me to walk there, whether that be a commercial effort of, you know, a great restaurant or a bar or, I don't know, magazine, bookstore, whatever, but something that makes you want to keep walking, because we don't have that right now. And that's happening on Castro. I hope none of the people from San Antonio Center here, I hate San Antonio Center. I think it looks like it's going to be Chernobyl someday, because it looks like everything's about to fall on you, and I feel, it feels like a cap, you know, like a cave or, anyway. So please save the mature trees, please widen the sidewalks. I don't think we're going to keep bikes and whatever kind of robot things come in the future off the sidewalks. It's going to be a maintenance issue if we can get that in check. So I don't think we're going to get people out of their cars if we don't create downtowns that are, you don't want to get in your car. You only want to walk, and the reason you want to walk is because there's something to walk to.
Thank you so much.
Anyway, thank you.
Hello, my name is Joyce Yen, and I actually live in the Eichler community as well. I'm also an architect, and I used to do urban design as well. So again, thank you for the slideshow. It covered a lot. I just want to touch on a couple of things. One, and I can't reiterate enough, is that architecture and urban design are hand-in-hand, so you can't have one without the other. And when we're talking about a street like El Camino, if that's going to be a grand boulevard, you have to think about what that boulevard is, like what are the priorities? Is it a walking boulevard, walking biking, walking biking shared with cars or transport? And until you know what that thing is, the whole street, I think you're going to have a hard time dictating architectural guidelines for the buildings on it. So that just lays the foundations for architectural guidelines. That said, if we're talking about just architectural styles or forms per parcel, two things. One is the process. I think staff just has to be educated, and I'm sure they are, but they also have to have the ability to tell developers that's not good enough, or we want X, Y, and Z a little bit different. I know you're going that direction, push it a little bit more. That might be already going on, but I understand cost is a challenge. I don't know how much things cost to build these days. I'm sure it's expensive, but at some point, if cost is the only thing dictating, then we're sure to get, yeah, what we get. Another is in terms of the guidelines. I wouldn't dictate style necessarily. Style is easy to discuss, because it's easy for people to talk about it because you're familiar with it. So if you say Mission Style, you kind of have an idea what that means. But Mission Style was designed back in the day before air conditioning. Buildings were two to three stories. If they were taller, it was a tower piece, massive thick walls to keep the sun out, little windows, and because the walls are so thick, then you get depth of the window, and that's visible. It feels heavy, it feels massive. Maybe the base has more openings than it's usually for a loggia. If you say you want a nine-story, eight-story, seven-story building in Mission Style, I don't think you're going to get it. So I wouldn't necessarily go with style. I would say, okay, if you want the building to look heavy and massive, more traditional, then the building, the material needs to fit what it should be doing. So if it's going to mimic stucco and thick massive walls, it needs to look thick. It can't be one inch of stucco and you're thinking that it's this big, heavy building. This is one example. And then I also, sorry, I'll take a little bit, I'll be quick. And if you wanted a critique of what's going on, I think, I'm trying to get a feel for what people are complaining about, I think because we're doing so much development in such a short amount of time, this is the look of our time. So Chicago, gorgeous architecture, because the bulk of theirs was after the fire, and it was industrial look. Steel just happened to go up, and so you get tall buildings that still have, it's of the time. And then you also get some of the modern things woven in, and so they're lucky. Most of their development was at that time. This is architecture of the time. If we don't like that, then we're going to have to then force some things, which means if you want it to look traditional, then it needs to look authentically traditional. And I wouldn't, again, I wouldn't go for style. I would say, what are some seven-story buildings that you like? Look at all the ones that look good across the styles and determine what those characteristics are. Base, middle, top. There's a solid to glass proportion. There's proportioning of the whole thing, and then there's hierarchy of how things read. I'd say one big critique of a lot of the images I've seen is that there's so much trying to be articulate in the facade that there's no primary reading. It's a massive everything but the kitchen sink, and that doesn't look good either. So there needs to be a hierarchy of readings in the building.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sorry, go on and on.
One question from Mission.
I have a quick question. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Do you feel, and this goes to one of the questions that we're asked, do you feel that this is a problem or challenge that applies throughout the city, or should we be focusing on specific locations within the city that are particularly problematic?
I think it's more than just the city. I think it's a big problem everywhere now. Just, you know, there is a kind of way of doing things that's cost-efficient, and once, I think, a company knows how to do it, they tend to use that as their counterparts, because it is cost-effective, and that's their goal, to make it sellable and make money. But when everyone's doing something similar, you're just going to get a similar look, and if you really want something different and the variety, you're going to have to push it. By saying, we don't want that, we want this, but instead of saying, here's a picture of what we want, you have to give them, set characteristics of what those are, and I wouldn't say style. It should be characteristics of what you want done. Yeah. I think style is too hard to do. But Mission, architectural style, that's what I'm saying. You can't do that.
Do we have a few more public comments?
I'm worried about this, or wondered about this for, oh, by the way, my name's Don Lafferty. By the way, I've been a resident in Mountain View almost 40 years, so I moved here in 1979. So, and I've watched the town grow from a very small downtown to a very vigorous, wonderful downtown. One of the problems that I saw came up recently, and I was really disappointed, I have to tell you. The corner of El Camino and Castro, the intersection there. On one corner, there's this nice park that's been there for, God, must have been 50 years. Then on the other corner, there's what used to be the Home Savings, but now it's, I think it's Chase Bank. On the other corner, I call it the Harrow Blue and Kelly Building, because that's who built it, but it's the brick building. And the new building on the fourth corner, by the way, all of these, we have the park on one corner, we have the beautiful plaza at the Home Savings or the Chase Bank, and the Harrow Blue and Kelly Building, they have that beautiful plaza with the sculptures. And on the fourth corner, we let these guys put in a building right to the sidewalk, and all we have on that corner is a Beats Coffee. And I think we had an opportunity for a gateway, and the reason I'm saying this is not to criticize, but to say, hey, let's not make these kinds of mistakes again. We had the fourth corner, we had an opportunity to make that the gateway to Mountain View, and we lost it. We lost the opportunity. And I just wanted to call it to your attention, because I think, jeez, that was a real planning error. And besides that, I have to say, I'm sorry to say, I don't really care for the architecture of the building. It had some real opportunities, but like this lady's talking about, textures and forms, they could have done a much nicer job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for staying with us. Good public comment for 9:30.
Yeah, real quick. I'm Perry Herrarium with Fort Bay, Miramar Property Group. I did want to talk about the styles for some of the new higher-density projects that we, again, discussing at the last one. I do want to commend the two ladies from the Eichler community. They were very articulate, very thoughtful, very knowledgeable. I was impressed. Today, I spent a grueling hour and a half with the design review committee with David and Rebecca, and actually after a two-year period on our project on 77 Middlefield, I think it's evolved into a really nice project that I think you guys would be very proud to have in your community. It has evolved, it's incorporated a lot of these elements, and it blends in well with that community. It's kind of a contemporary version of a traditional look. I think they've done a really good job to challenge us to make it nice. But I do want to agree with the two ladies that spoke. You don't want to dictate style, because style is part of, it evolves, and you are, as a developer, building to your market, and if your market is going to be younger tech residents, they're going to have a certain sensibility, a certain sense of style, and they're going to want certain things. And so to make it a marketable product, it's got to appeal to your customer. So you can't really dictate style, and you don't want them uniform, so you need to be accommodating to different styles. The one thing that this, and I think the presentation was great, I think it needs to address to what Mr. Tuttle said at Prometheus about East Wisman. To get to that three-point FAR, we can't do the seven stories. We need to go taller. To get the density you guys need, we're probably going to have to go 10, 11 stories, and that's going to dictate a certain style. It's going to have to be a little more contemporary, it's going to have to have, it's going to take up more of the space. It's not going to look like what you've seen before. So what you've seen on El Camino, to get 3.5, that's almost twice the FAR, it's going to be completely different looking, so you need to have an open mind to what that's going to look like to get that kind of thing. So that's what I want to prep the consultants and the staff to be ready for, and be a little, and that area's actually, I think, more appropriate for it, because you're surrounded by tall commercial buildings. You've got the Samsung building, the Synopsys. You're going to have new Google buildings, so it's going to be contemporary. The residents are going to be tech residents, and so I think that's appropriate, and just want to have everybody have an open mind to what that scale is going to be like.
Hi, my name's Allison Hicks, and I live in the downtown. I wanted to start by thanking you for bringing up architecture and style in general because I have to say, living in the downtown where there's been, I live near Church Street, there's been a lot of development in the parties in my neighborhood. This is something we talk about all the time, the things that we've liked that have developed in Mountain View over time. And then I have to say, more recently, the things that people don't like. So, and people usually bring up El Camino and San Antonio as the examples of what they don't like. Also, the recent developments on Church and Castro. I wanted to thank you, Pam, for bringing, for including the slideshow referencing different architectural styles that have developed in Mountain View over time. I agree that you can't, I wouldn't want to dictate styles, and I also agree that with current building materials and building practices, I would not want to try to replicate some of the historic styles in Mountain View. But I did want to talk about, I think there's one that we can reference that was not brought up yet. I think of Mountain View as developing mainly in three different time periods. One's kind of the turn of the century, you know, the farms, farmhouses, and the buildings you see in the first three blocks of Castro Street, which I, which we really have to save because we're not going to be able to replicate anything like them. The second is the post-war period, which is much of what you see on Castro and El Camino today is mid-century modern. It doesn't look often the way it used to because a lot of mid-century modern is a blank canvas to put a fabulous, probably a fabulous neon sign on or some other sign. But I actually think that as scale goes up and with current building materials and practices, you can replicate or reference, maybe I shouldn't say replicate, but reference some elements of mid-century modern. And I also think, those are some of the things that Carol was actually talking about because you see a little bit of it in Eichler neighborhoods. And this is what our area, this was our area's gift to architecture, right? Eichler is mid-century modern. So I actually, and I also think, when you're talking about current markets, I think, I mean, I see this going on, for instance, in LA and a lot of neighborhoods around there, a lot of referencing of mid-century modern. And that's actually very Mountain View. So that was one thing. The other thing is, you know, the architectural consultant, you stole a lot of what I was going to say. So, but you wouldn't let me speak that long anyway. So I just agree that, for me, the thing, oh, the biggest problem in the San Antonio Center is there are not even sidewalks. I mean, people, I read the planning literature here, it's all about walkability. I would like next year to be the year of the pedestrian. You can't walk from one building to another in the San Antonio Center. I almost never drive my car. I live downtown, so I don't have to. I drive from Safeway to Trader Joe's. You know, please don't do that again. I know that's not an architectural style.
I'm sorry to cut you off. We have our commissioner who has to leave moments early. Do you want to say your last point?
Yeah, the one last thing is that this is something that I hope doesn't get replicated. Also, I think the ground floor interface on El Camino is the ground floor interface with the sidewalk, like the architectural consultant said, is, could be improved. The sidewalks could be wider, street trees could buffer you from the street, and the ground floor interface really, I think, needs a lot of work.
Any other public comment? So before we open it up to the commission, because Commissioner Schreiber has to go, if you could share some of your initial impressions.
Yes. So I've been one of the people complaining about the buildings going up lately. And so I understand the panelized systems may get cheaper to build. Nice to get different textures on there because then you have kind of the same boxy overall look with the kind of, what seems to me like to be kind of forced articulation, for articulation's sake. They look kind of the same. I agree with the idea of having more landscaping and making it more walkable. Some of these, so I guess going through real quickly. So number two on here, that does look like it has the panelized system, it looks like a panelized system to me. It does have the horizontal elements, does look different than a lot of other things.
Are you referencing the staff report?
Oh, yes, staff report exhibit one. Maybe I can go through here, and since I don't have time to explain in detail a lot of things, I could go, yes, no, yes, no, or something like that. So number three, it does, although it has more of a stucco-ish looking thing, it still has that same kind of boxy, I think, stuff that I would say is more like Borg architecture, just very big boxes, even though it has the top and the bottom and the middle, they're still very blocky, all right angles. Number four does a bit better from the first picture where you do have the art stepping up, and it looks like it's more, a richer material, like more bricks and more stonework on there. Number five, not so much. You have different colors, which is kind of interesting. I like bright primary colors, but just here, it just looks very boxy. Similarly, on number seven, the very heavy shades that don't look like that shade very well. It looks kind of like stuff for the sake of, I guess, design that doesn't look very functional to me, and still has the boxy look there. Similarly, on number nine, still boxy, different materials, but still that big panel look, still the hat on top. Tens, still the hat on top of the different materials I like better, it looks more. To me, this looks more like what you could have as a larger, more traditional building, but still has the top hat thing. Similarly, number 12, the top hat, again, although I do like the balconies and things like that, they look actually like they might be usable space. So I like that much better than the example that we had in Sunnyvale where you have the unusable space that is reusable. And similarly, 13, still has the top hat kind of thing with big blocks of construction. Although, a good thing about it, it doesn't have forced articulation. Number 14, I like that. It does look like it has more of a sense of presence in the design that you would have. It just looks more friendly to me. And number 15, I really like that design, but I understand it may not scale up to 17 stories very well. But the curved arches, the tower roofs, those are nice. And I think at the street level would make a nice thing, even if the building above it is more of a contemporary look. Number 16, again, big boxy type thing with British to me, even though it does have the kind of interesting angular design up on the corner there. And number 17, I like the curved features on there, even though it does have boxiness in the back. And number 18, the kind of shades they have there, I think, make it look a lot, a lot better. There is some angle there other than a right angle.
Record time. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And the presentation was great. I liked your presentation as well. Commissioner Barry.
Right. Which are even the odds, was there anyone who didn't get a chance to make public comment that wanted to? Okay. Thank you for allowing our little schedule adjustment. So Rebecca, if you have, did she have another slide for question number one?
Yeah, so again, this was an opportunity for EPC, if you so desire to dig in a little bit more to try to clarify, get some better understanding of your concerns, if there are particular elements after having had this presentation or thinking through further that, you know, you think are causing some of the blockiness or, you know, I think that's probably the one that is the most general and perhaps sort of less clear to understand. I mean, buildings have a lot of right angles, so they kind of, they are fundamentally boxes, right? So I don't know that there's going to be a lot that you guys have to clarify. Maybe I'm wrong about that. But if there is any sort of digging that you can do to try to add some, layer on some detail at the rate.
So one question before we jump in, I was struck by one of the public comments that said, this is of our time. And I wonder how much of the blockiness that we're seeing, which you both characterize, is this of our time or is this an architectural styling issue? I mean, to me, it just seems like we're, this is what we see right now.
Well, it's really interesting. If you, if you went to 1920 and you went and you said, wow, all the houses in this neighborhood look the same. Today, you'd say, wow, this is a great bungalow neighborhood.
Right.
But they are all the same. It's like, I actually saw a comment on San Francisco, in San Francisco, where they said, it's too repetitive, this 25-foot pattern of bay and entry and bay and entry. Well, all of the zoning regulations are replicating the San Francisco Victorian pattern of bay and entry and bay and entry on the street. So it's very purposeful. And so I think what you're seeing now is you've seen a very, you've seen an awful lot of development, maybe proportionally more than you will ever see again, is my guess, that was pent up from a major recession that all happened within four or five years. And so it kind of has the same vocabulary. It all went through design review with the same design review team, the same planning commission, the same city council, all at the same staff, same set of design guidelines, all at the same time. And you probably won't see that occur again. I'm sure it's going to slow down on the El Camino Real because those were all properties that were purchased during the recession. They're all two to three acres. When we did the analysis, there's only a certain number of buildings, developments that were going to occur along there of that scale. They all fell into the same regulations and the same design principles. So you probably won't see that again occur until we have another major recession and people are able to aggregate parcels together again. So you will see something similar maybe in the North Bay Shore when they break the code and have, are able to do two or three buildings at the same time, break the development code of suddenly being able to figure out how to get all the projects approved, constructed all at the same time. It usually happens in little bursts. And so you do have a tendency of seeing four or five buildings that kind of come through. Developers are actually, contrary to popular opinion, really smart. When they see one project get approved, the next one comes in right behind it and it follows the same pattern. And so I think that what you're seeing is just a little, a little of that having occurred in the last couple of years. And I think a lot of cities are grappling with, are saying the exact same comments. And I think the important thing for this city is to say, we have the ability because you're in a very unique situation. You have a very hot market, you have, you have a lot of people with incomes that are going to pay these rents. Construction costs are going up, but that isn't the only issue. And I think that if there are certain things that you want to focus on and give your team the ability to address, now's the time to do it because there's going to be more down the line. And I think that you will be happier having put your stamp on it a little bit and saying, hey, we would like to see these elements occur over time.
I could share one more thought. I would say, I think a lot of the structures that people are reacting to are four-story structures. And so when you break it into base, middle, and top, what you end up with is a square in the middle. When you start to add features that, that provide a lower scale to the building and sort of try to de-emphasize that, the appearance of the top. And so there are still different ways to skin articulation, and, you know, hearing more from you on that is, it will be useful. But I do think that some of it is, you know, a combination of developers trying to sort of maximizing its yields and floor area, combined with just like, this is sort of, this can be, is one of the key ways that you can articulate a four-story mass.
Great. So to start us off, I'd like to focus initially just on clarifying or modifying the concerns that we heard staff say that they have heard from us and go from there. Commissioner Ramirez.
I guess I could put more general question.
Yeah.
So, you know, reading the staff report and listening to the presentation and your remarks just now, I get the impression that the city's design review team probably takes most, if not all, of the things that we're concerned about into consideration. You know, I think everybody would agree that walkability, entry can't be all of the features that, you know, we're, of a comment are essential. And I guess what I'm wondering is, what kind of feedback can we give you that would be helpful? Because if we say, if we just reiterate walkability and material, you know, variation, that kind of thing, I don't know if that's going to translate into something actionable that would, that would really help you.
Yeah, I mean, I think what's useful is when you say walkability and then you surround that with information like, you know, access to stoops at the ground level, you know, more robust landscaping, sort of, you know, focus on materiality at the base. So when you sort of come with that concept and layer on sort of information about the qualities that help achieve walkability in your mind, people might have different opinions on that, but if we at least get some of that information, it gives us more to chew on as far as tools to address the bigger concern.
Yeah, I think it would help, you know, address these comments, design guidelines and policies and setbacks. You know, you want more landscape, you want wider sidewalks, then the setbacks need to be looked at again and relook at, you know, the street, the streetscape. I think it's very important to walkability, but that translates to a little more area. You can't do it in eight feet. So that would inform us to relook at those design guidelines and, or those policies and see if we can beat them up. It doesn't have to happen everywhere. I think there's tough sites that can't make that thing work, but that's why you have to be judicious and where you really push it, certainly where the opportunity is. So I think that's, I think where it can be actionable, that we can beef up these design guidelines. Because I, you know, I like to refer to those guidelines, you know, we try not to be arbitrary in our comments despite what they think sometimes. Try to point to a policy and, and, and how we try to make it work. And we just want a consistent voice too, from EPC, City Council, DRC, that the applicants get a consistent message on that. But we need, we need the tools to back it up.
Oh, okay. So I just wanted to expand on some of that up there and just give you, you know, some examples of some things I really like and tell you why, okay? And some things that I don't like and why. So, I mean, if I look alone at buildings that have been built recently in Mountain View, one of the ones that I really like well is the Franklin Street Formal Family Housing complex. I mean, you know, it's just, people, everybody who looks at that, when I bring people in and, you know, I say like, that's an affordable housing. And they say, I can't believe it, it looks good. And I realize that it cost, you know, half a million dollars a unit, okay? But I mean, you know, but all of that wasn't in the outside of the building, okay? And there are just things about it that are really great. I mean, you know, I, you know, not, I know they'd want to say the style, but the Mission Style's nice for that size. I mean, I think that, you know, I mean, it's a quality building with quality facing materials, and there's a lot of attention to detail. You mean, there's awnings, there's balconies, there's light fixtures, not that they just have them, but look at what they look like. I mean, you know, they give you a sense of home, okay? When you look at it, and the point there is, is that, you know, people say like, well, you know, boxes, boxes, you know, residential, commercial can be the same. You know, I mean, the thing about it is, the thing that, for me, that is the difference between residential and commercial is, is that in residential, if somebody lives there and they want to feel like, you know, that pride or sense of ownership comes out in the quality that they put into it. I mean, you know, and even often in the little effects. So another thing is, like, we talk about integration in the neighborhood. So I want to give some compliments back to Madera, okay? And in particular, I mean, I think the architecture was done very well. I mean, you know, here's a few little touches that I think make go a long way. Like the light post volards down there at Madera, I mean, you know, they, they don't just look like they were just, you know, I bought the cheapest set of them I could get at Costco. I mean, you know, they look quality, okay? I mean, quality went down a little bit at 100 Mobbit, okay, for the same kind of style, okay? But I mean, that really was quite, that's nice. And another very nice touch is that, you know, the symbol of old Mountain View is those lamp posts, okay? And they found a way to integrate them into the Madera complex while, you know, making a slightly modern twist to it, okay? But still, you know, I live right next to there and I feel when I'm walking down through Paseo that I'm still walking in my neighborhood, even though it has its own sense. So that was a really good thing that they did. And the traditional architecture there, you know, it did well matching with, around our single-family homes. What I don't like, okay? You know, so I'm going to pick on a building that's not quite in Mountain View. Okay, that Holiday Inn Express on Los Altos, I just, my God, what is that? Okay? And I mean, you know, it just, it looks like, you know, you want to talk blocky, I mean, that's just, that's just like cinder blocks thrown together with, you know, a little bit of gray and white paint on it. And say like, okay, here you go, you're only going to stay here a night, don't let it bother you too much. Okay? So. So, I mean, you know, don't, that's bad, okay? And don't do that. And, you know, like, we talk about like, these features here, what are the things that are not working? You know, like, okay, you know, the plain windows that just stick out of nowhere and have no dressing, no shutters, no nothing, okay? I mean, it's just like, and you know, like, well, okay, you know, so this is the Prometheus one, but, you know, Montrose? I mean, you know, I counted there, eight of them, exactly the same, you know, like, they came out of footcutter right next to each other. You know, we've heard many times, you know, the idea that, you know, I mean, one of the ways of dealing with massing is to not just have everything look too much the same over too long a length. So, you know, that's, that's something. I mean, you know, the windows, I get that it's easier to do windows that are square and rectangular, but, you know, back where I, you know, where I grew up, you know, there was a time where, you know, like, you put up a building and, you know, each place who put one up, even commercial buildings, they'd want to have something about it, okay, that make it stand out, you know, to say that this is us, you know, and, and I don't see as much of that, okay? And that's, and, and, you know, there's a, there's a few features that I think that they were innovative when, you know, they first happened, but when you start repeating them, like this on the top and those metal things sticking out, you know, I mean, they don't have any purpose and, you know, I mean, just, you know, if it were on one building, you know, it would be innovative. I mean, the rest of it, it sounds like, you know, somebody took it out of their, you know, box and ticked her twice and just put it together according to the block model. It doesn't, doesn't work everywhere, so. Anyway, you know, another thing is plazas. We have so many fake plazas, okay, and these things, these little ones, you know, I really would judge these kind of plazas by, do people want to sit there and do they actually want to be there, okay? You know, we have pseudo-plazas, okay? I mean, you know, I mean, and, you know, when it's all said and done, even like with parks, for instance, like, compare, you know, the dog park at San Antonio against, you know, Heritage Park, people are there at the dog park and they're not Heritage Park. So sometimes you can tell with these gathering places, if the people are there, it works, learn from it. So, and yeah, I agree. I mean, you know, at 801 El Camino, I mean, we were so focused on keeping the businesses there that we didn't spend much time on the architecture. And, you know, that 801 El Camino, that business is there is a big success, but, you know, what it looks like, you know, that's not so surprising that, you know, I want to praise Gray Star for working with us on the business issue, but when Gray Star came back with 2580 California, I mean, that's when the scream hit for the first time, right? Like, like, oh, no, take the boxes away, please. So I tried to go quick, Mr. Chinua, and I won't say anymore.
Vice Chair Baird.
Okay. So I think some of the pushback that we've seen is when we don't have projects that are integrated into the neighborhoods. So for example, 555 Riverfield, it was across from Cypress, that building, those buildings were so contemporary and they didn't fit in with the context of the neighborhood at all.
Which one?
555 Cypress.
It's under review right now. It's Avalon.
The Avalon extension.
Yeah. So I think, that's where I, and I, that one's being redesigned. And then the one over here on Villa, was that Prometheus? What over here on Villa?
Is it under review?
Yeah, and that's been redesigned. But that one, when it first came along, it was like they were trying to do a craftsman thing to be sensitive in the neighborhood, but it just didn't work at all. So I think the transitions, we've really got to be careful about how those appear when you're in a neighborhood, you're looking across at a new residential building, you want it to feel like you're still in a residential neighborhood and that you're not living over in North Bay Shore, which is going to have its own architecture, and I'm not criticizing that. The other thing that I think that we can also bear in mind that you can build tall stories, the Avalon over on El Camino, you drive by that, I drove by that for years and never paid any attention to it until somebody said, you know, those buildings are eight-story or 10-story high. Well, they're setback far enough, there's enough landscaping, which is big now. So we can do buildings over in Wisman and North Bay Shore. That building has some contemporary, the roof is curved at the top, which I know we can't do that with, you can put a false front on the front of it and then have it be flat behind it so you can get your solar panels in there. But that building, those two buildings, I think are a good example of how we can build residential construction. It has traditional features, but I like, it has balconies, it has a lot of articulation, it has strong corners. It just looks like a building that's been there for a long time and will be there for a long time. And I think also materials, I think part of what you like about Franklin Street is it does have materials that we like, they're solid and will be there for a long time. And there are some interesting surfaces that are coming into the architectural sphere. There's also new ways of construction, the laminated material construction, which is now, I think there's a building in Portland that's going up that's 12 stories high or something like that. So there's some new techniques of building, too. I don't know how expensive those are, but some of those buildings are going to be really exciting as far as the architecture and what can be done with those different materials. So again, the articulation, I think, is the important thing. It's sort of like pornography, you know it when you like it and you know it when you see it, but you can't describe it. You can't describe what it is or you don't want to describe what it is. So for us to give you some examples.
I'll say that from my salary for health.
So, I mean, it's difficult for us to say, okay, we like this, 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 and this, or don't do this, that, and this. And I really appreciate your presentation where you were talking about top, bottom, top, middle, and bottom. I hadn't really thought about that before, but that is a good way to articulate a taller building. And Rebecca, you're correct, that's hard to do in a four-story building. So then you end up with these little flying flat things sticking out at the top because you're trying to make a statement at the top, but there isn't enough room to do it.
Or you end up with articulation that is itself taller.
Right.
So you maybe don't get as much of the two to three-story features. And I think that one of the examples from San Francisco kind of shows us some of that more vertical, taller articulation can look like. But it is a different form. And I do think, not to play double advocate or defender, that, you know, some of those features really are about trying to give a smaller scale to buildings, knowing that there's concern about taller, taller, taller buildings and change in the community. So I think, you know, hearing that, it gives us food for thought, as they've already used. But, you know, that, if you're interested in other ways of articulating buildings, they could come in forms that are elongated. So I think that one of the, the audience member said it well, I should go back to my notes so I get it right, that, that, you know, that these buildings, particularly the very taller ones, are going to look different than anything else we've seen. And if there's some open-mindedness to play and to work with developers to do some, some things that are interesting and different, then, then I think that's something that we can, we can work with.
So I'll try to talk about things that my colleagues haven't spoken about. So one of those is, we kind of touched on it with the East Wisman Precise Plan, was element of retail. And briefly, I think in some of your slides, you presented on what it could look like for mixed use. And I think that we've talked about that a lot over the years on EPC on mixed use. And I remember when we were looking at 100 Moffitt, we were thinking, oh, could we put something in that corner there as people are crossing the street, hopefully to go take the train, VTA, go downtown? And the discussion is always how difficult it is to put retail into housing and have that be mixed use. I think that that's something that I like us to, I don't know if that's a design element. I don't know, you know, what that could be to help create that. As we're looking at East Wisman, ever becoming more residential, how do we create services and amenities there so people don't have to leave their communities? I think I mentioned in some of my comments, you know, being able to walk to somewhere and get what you need, I think would really help address the traffic and some of the traffic concerns we have. And as we're looking at those, have you tried to say something? Go ahead.
I, it's a point, I do want to just hit on this retail thing. This is probably the biggest, one of the biggest problems on the El Camino. So retail is so different today than it was when it was created. It's really hard. It doesn't pay for itself. There aren't that many types of shops and it takes a very special developer to be able to create a relationship with the types of businesses that they can come in and incubate a space like that. And that's the term they use most frequently. So you have to build a space for it. A lot of the rules and regulations that you have ask to build taller ceilings on the ground floor, allow for the retail space to be put in. That was exactly what they discussed at the Wisman Plan earlier. We build those into a lot of the documents. I think there's a, if you're doing 200 units or 250 units, there's a reluctance to put in 2,500 square feet of, 1,500 square feet of retail space, that they don't know how, it's not their business. And most of them, most of the development committee doesn't really care for and want to get into the retail business. When they do, it becomes a, they try, they do it as an amenity for their residential. It's not so much a retail business for retail business sake, and it's very difficult to do. And the quest, the fundamental question you have to decide is, is it better to have an empty retail space or make it into a common space that you can use? And then the odds of it becoming a retail space once the residents have used it as a common space, it's just a challenge. And I'm just saying, you, somewhat to do it have to be either extremely dictatorial or so flexible that you probably aren't going to achieve your effectiveness.
And this is the
And I'm just being honest about it.
Right. And this is a comment that we hear all the time.
I know.
So I think, you know, when we're talking about looking at our new precise plan and we're talking about that, how do we, you know, I said additional input to clarify, modify concerns, I'm just addressing it as a concern.
And I think it's good.
Because we talk about it, but then we get the feedback, how difficult it is, and then we just put the residential in. But where are people going to go and get services and amenities? So I understand the feedback, I'm just trying to reiterate that concern. And if we're talking about going to taller heights, then I think perhaps it might be more marketable. I have, I have a friend who, many friends who live in the River Oaks Complex, which is in North San Jose, which has, you know, a yoga studio, a poke, like a lot of different amenities in there. And it's right, they have a park and it's right next to the Guadalupe River Trail. It's great. And, you know, are those the types of things that we're trying to create? And I guess kind of dovetails into my other concern, which is like place-making, so that people feel that they don't need to go somewhere else, but that it's their home, similar to what Commissioner Cox was saying. When you feel like it's your home, you have what you need and you have your community. And what are we doing to help facilitate that? You know, I don't know, I know that there was discussion about, you know, setbacks, landscaping, you know, to help create that and facilitate that. Something else that's been of interest of mine is incorporating art. We have a visual arts committee and I know that they have been working on, you know, different partnerships throughout the city. We, they just revealed their utility boxes that have been painted, so little things like that. I think if that were in front of where I live, I would think would help great. It just is one more thing that makes where I live look beautiful and interesting. And I think those are partnerships that we can, you know, that are, that's a natural synergy.
I don't disagree with anything that's been said. I think the one thing I would emphasize is, I guess, what I, the note I took was pedestrian orientation, I think that was the term that was used. And I think that, that gets to the walkability component. It's more, I don't feel like I have a lot to contribute on the design side. It's, you know, talking about architecture is very much like speaking about music. I feel like there's a lot of subjectivity to it. And I've heard, you know, I have friends who like the traditional older-style architecture and friends who like the contemporary-style architecture. I don't feel like I am well-versed enough in the subject to be able to contribute meaningfully to that discussion other than I tend to like diversity. But what I, where I do feel strongly, I think, is in how, I interact with or experience a structure, you know, just as a pedestrian. I'm most likely not going to be living in any of these buildings, you know, working in them. So the most meaningful interaction I have is walking past it. And I think there's a lot to be said for the experience in an area that, or in a building or in a location that definitely tries to engage the pedestrian in some capacity, whether it's an activation to try and draw people in, so the retail component, or if it's not designed to draw people in, at least give people a plus experience walking by. And so I tend to like wider sidewalks, I tend to like lots of landscaping. I tend to like materials that are interesting to look at. You know, beyond that, I don't know, I feel like it's hard for me to provide much more specific direction than that, just because I don't want to be so prescriptive that I'm just dictating my own personal preferences and, you know, not meaning open the possibility of other things that I haven't considered. But I do think that's, you know, that's for me, the most important element. So I think, I live near the San Antonio Shopping Center. I deal with Safeway in that area. And I completely agree, it's a very hostile area. I also work in downtown San Jose and, you know, that's, it's a, it's a different kind of environment, urban. I have friends and coworkers who work in San Jose and describe it as gritty and they don't like that, but that's sort of my experience of it as somebody who's been in Mountain View. They just like walking in downtown San Jose is very different from walking in downtown Mountain View. You know, and, and my preference is, is sort of that inviting and welcoming vibe that you get in downtown Mountain View. So whatever it is that makes downtown Mountain View a very welcoming, pleasant place is generally what I'd like to see in new development. One, one other thing. So I, I also want to agree strongly with Vice Chair Baird that I think to the extent it's helpful to allow some flexibility in height, that may make possible, you know, a more welcoming or friendly pedestrian environment, I think that's a discussion that, that we should definitely have. Where it makes sense, the seven story limitation may preclude a lot of those possibilities. So, you know, maybe East Wisman, I know, different conversation, a different agenda, but that's, I think that's, that's a potentially key component of the discussion. And there are, there's a different set of design guidelines that I think would need to make that work. But I think that they're, they're really-
One more comment. I noticed City of Palo Alto, they're planning, their, their design review committee is having a meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30 and they're exploring the South El Camino design review guidelines. And I looked at their staff report and it's very, very tiny, not much, but one of the climates that they wanted was that they wanted the buildings to go out to the sidewalk. I hope they increase the width of the sidewalks. So anyway, I don't know if you can find a report on that of what they're putting together, but it'd be interesting to see.
Well, I actually wrote those guidelines.
Okay. Well, the staff report doesn't say-
Twenty years, twenty years ago.
Oh, okay. Well, then they're, they're updating them.
Yeah, and they want to update them. And they wanted, they both widened the sidewalk and brought the buildings up to the street. And that's something that you actually have said in various guidelines and you have them in Castro Street and others too. I think what you have, and that's kind of the standard urban response, particularly when, and it works well when it's retail, because that's what they also said they wanted, but they aren't getting the retail either. So I think that's the challenge you have. And so actually your El Camino guidelines say, if you don't have the retail, then you need to have a wider setback. So you get some of the landscaping, so you get the transition. And I think that hearing that that is important helps staff, designer review committee, any refinements to the guidelines, helps reinforce that those are the things to focus on during a review process.
Because the quirk to sort of connect to seemingly disparate comments that Brick has provided is that, you know, the El Camino allows slightly lesser, you know, setback conditions, still widening the sidewalk for commercial uses. It also allows that setback to be used for, for buildings and structures that have sort of other residential accessory uses, potentially over time could convert to commercial, which is that, that connection of the points. And so there are some building setback conditions that use the commercial setback because of the flexibility that was built into the El Camino Real Precise Plan, knowing that, you know, long-term building corridor could take many years and creating flexible spaces, or trying to create flexible spaces is a tickle to that, or is the philosophy behind that. But hearing that it's vitally important, maybe because of the way that how and where, you know, flexibility for a lesser setback is, is allowed.
Just two comments that I don't think have been made. And I think to echo Commissioner Ramirez, I think the idea of this experience is really important, and whether it's a pedestrian experience. I was recently in Paris and Vancouver and I think what was interesting to me is I saw a lot of use of these living walls, right? And one of the things, I actually thought about Mountain View because one of our arcades leading right behind Ava's, that has this great symbol of Mountain View, right? And it's, it's interesting, it's, I imagine, very inexpensive to maintain, but, but it has something that makes kind of this pedestrian experience of like, I don't know what I'm gonna see. And to me, I'm not sure if that is a material that we have considered about using these living walls and living landscapes to try and incorporate. Can I just finish my thought? I'm sorry. And I, I don't know, but I feel like if we're trying to get at experiences where these aren't likely places that I personally would have the opportunity to live or work. The place where I work is very institutional in its architecture. Stanford has its distinct style and is struggling because a lot of the modern uses that we need on campus are hard to do with tile terracotta roofs and these kinds of things. But the idea of building in the neighborhood context, I like it, 100 Moffett, that you can see there's some echoes of the Adobe building that's right across the street. You can see the color is picked up on and any of those touches, I think, help integrate. You had a comment?
So, living walls are good. However, if you look at the Palo Alto Library in Mitchell's Heart, when that first was planted, it was lush and wonderful. I'm not sure our climate prevails. I've seen them in, in Berlin and other European cities where rain's in the summertime and it's lush and wonderful. I don't know-
Sure, but we're talking about native plants, we're talking about all sorts of things. Everything's on the table.
You can figure out some way to keep it alive, but the one over at, at the library in Palo Alto, things half dead.
You actually have one across the street. I just saw it when I was walking, so I came and I took a picture of it. So we'll have it at the council.
One last thought. I mean, I, I do understand that retail has to change and it has to be, you know, moving toward the future or whatever, you know, but, but still, I mean, you know, I mean, so think about where people are going and do something with it. Like maybe, maybe something innovative is a fill-
You could fill a whole bunch of Amazon malls.
Okay? Because that's how people are getting to retail. But I mean, you could do it in an interesting way. Okay? You know, it's, it's two things people like to do. But I mean, you know, but the idea is people getting together, spending some time, having a functional environment that they enjoy and have a sense of place.
I, I can say, my, my point to that wasn't to say that it can't be done. My point was, if this is a really important thing for you, you have to kind of say, this is an issue that needs to be emphasized so that everybody works towards, just like you worked towards keeping Pete's over on Castro. If, if you're trying to keep those businesses there, because that is actually the character and quality that you're, all those things that you were just asking about is what you wanted there. If you wanted it in another place, it won't always occur, but it won't occur if you don't actually facilitate the space to put it there. And the, the city of San Francisco is famous for having spaces that end up being empty for a pretty long period of time. And then you have to work on temporary uses for those spaces. But fundamentally, there's spaces that the development community is underwriting with their residential development. So you have to be cognizant of doing the right amount and doing it to facilitate things appropriately. But if it's a fundamental goal of the, of the city, then you need to make sure that you fit it in in the appropriate way. And the El Camino actually has flexibility to create retail spaces for corner, really called corner stores.
The neighborhood corner locations, scattered throughout the corridor and then there's sort of like the village center, the larger centers. Some of those exist already and, and so it's about, you know, what, what 10, 20, 30, 40 years down the line might be the next iteration of that center. But the, you know, the, the strategy of seating commercial along the corridor is, is there and they might not want to go all to the, to all the restaurants at San Antonio Center. I mean, there, there is that commercial space there, it's currently primarily, you know, restaurants.
One more public comment.
Oh, it's just a question.
Yeah.
For you and maybe everyone would benefit by hearing. You're saying that it's difficult for some of these developers to put retail in, but as the density increases, you're getting a lot of people in a smaller number space, that help drive the ability to lease these spaces in time?
You know, it takes so much to support a cafe. It's, the, the buildings, you might think that there are a lot of people in them, but in comparison to what it takes to support a cafe or, and every place can't be a cafe. They become amenities for the development and if it's located in the right location where it's a good cross-section and it happens to get some people going in both directions, it'll work. But just placing a space there doesn't mean it's going to be successful. And it takes a lot of hard work to incubate some of these businesses. And particularly if you don't want to chain business and want it to be local, it's even harder. And so there are certain developers that are very successful at incubating these small businesses because they know that they help bring in people that want to live in there. But the, but the businesses themselves aren't creating any income. All they're doing is creating amenities.
Yeah, it's because back in the day, you used to have like, you know, single family houses and in those neighborhoods, sorry, row houses. There are only, you know, one unit for 30 feet wide, 25 feet wide, but every corner would have a little corner store. If, if the businesses, the chains even-
That's before they did, yeah, that was before. And more locations, a little-
And that's exactly what isn't happening. And, and, and that's the, and we'd all love that.
And there's, there are other factors that are not design related that are, are integral to that, that particular issue. So I mean, how are people shopping these days? There's minimum wage issues, being able to hire people who live two hours away or can only afford to live two hours away. So there, there are a lot of compounding factors around restaurant and retail uses right now that, that sort of further complicate achieving successful, you know, ground floor commercial uses. And a lot of people were trying very hard to address many of those things, but it's, it's, there are some challenges there.
The density is increasing rapidly and that would only help.
Commissioner Kamai. And I think part of it is, might be, if it's not retail, maybe some of their service amenities, you know, like a little pocket post office or like a little, you know, pub library or, you know, a community room, you know, that you could rent out through the city. Just a variety of things, just to help with, I think, that community activation. That was kind of my goal in my comment, is the overarching umbrella of creating a place, you know, communities, yeah, community making, you know, and creating a sense of a neighborhood. And, and what could those things be other than just like a park?
I know we're not in Manhattan, but what's happening in those enlarged streets like that with density, has their retail gone away?
So can I just, just because I want to, I think there's a lot of enthusiasm and this is a topic that's going to continue being discussed. Rebecca, I think you have comments from all of the commission about these particular topics.
And I think a little bit of the next topic as well.
Yeah, a little bit people touch on concerns as well as, you know, objectives. And I just want to make sure, are there opportunities in the future for interested members of the public, if they want to come to the city council meetings, if they want to be involved in design review in some way, like what are the avenues to make sure that you're-
The, the DRC meetings are during the day, which can make it challenging for, for some folks to attend, but agendas are, are posted online, so you can always tell what projects are coming. We meet, I should know this because I'm the DRC chair, but I went to council late last night and I'm back here again. It's every second and fourth Wednesday.
Yeah, it's the same day, it's the same day as we-
Our meetings start at 2, 2, 2 PM. Every once in a while, meetings cancel, but you can sign up for agenda notifications, so you'll get the agenda the Friday, typically the Friday before each meeting. So you're, you're always welcome to come there. You know, projects that are undergoing development review go through a series of public hearings. Typically at the very end, sometimes they'll have study sessions early in the process. And typically we'll also have neighborhood meetings if you happen to live in a, near, inner near a neighborhood where one, a development is occurring. So all of those public meetings are opportunities to, to contribute thoughts on individual projects. You know, we'll be having the same study session with council on June, on June 19th. And, you know, we'll, we'll try to capture the comments provided tonight in, you know, the subsequent staff reports to city council, but you're, you're sort of welcome to, to share further thoughts either by email and writing or attending that meeting to, to get, to get at council directly.
And so I think we covered question number one pretty well about the concerns, what we like, what we don't like. Question number two about objectives related to future higher intensity residential. I, I think what I've heard from the commission is a focus on pedestrian experience, a real sense of place making, an opportunity to incorporate some of the elements that we like most about our downtown and our open spaces where people are actually using them, they're not just a design element that looks good on paper. And I heard some consensus about not being too prospective with a type of style, but more encouraging diversity of materials, uses to allow, again, this, I keep going back to experience, but the idea that what you're seeing in these buildings makes a statement, but in a way that is thoughtful and fits in with the neighborhood character. Are there other comments related to number two that I?
I might be putting words in people's mouths or minds, but I, I think I, I also heard a little bit, and I don't know if there was consensus around trying to get at the boxiness issue by exploring different, different forms of articulation and including perhaps some consideration of, of additional height if it yields different proportions of features for us.
That's, yeah, absolutely. Number, the third question, does EPC support the staff strategies laid out in the report to address its concerns?
Just not to belabor it, but, you know, I think that Commissioner Baird sort of touched specifically on projects that, you know, receive direction, that's at staff's behest, that EPC's direction, council's direction, to, to use more traditional features for projects that really are specifically in a neighborhood. And I think what we're hearing tonight is that there's sort of openness for more variety, you know, along particular areas that are, are subject to greater change and have a different context, but sensitivity in its transitions to adjacent neighborhoods. So I think this question, maybe if, if we were to focus or pare it down a little bit, might be more about sort of how far that, that variety. I think I'm still hearing, for instance, that you, you want some more traditional forms when it's really within a residential neighborhood and that that might include the strategy that staff has taken with row house developments. I, I will say, and David, you know, can share this because he's, he's heard it, that even sort of these row house developers are hearing from their, their buyers that sort of something that toes a little bit more of a contemporary line is attractive to them. And I'll also say as, as chair of the DRC that we, we are seeing a lot of row house developments and some of them are starting to kind of feel the same, because you can only skin the cat so many ways. So, you know, if EPC at this late hour has any thoughts on that in particular, it might be useful to hear.
Just, just one, one main comment. A question I'd like to hear asked at like the DRC meetings or something like that is just simply this, I mean, like, what is it about this particular, you know, building or development or whatever that is unique and contributes to it being a unique place, okay, in the community? Okay? I mean, you know, we've heard even like, you know, even like, taking it a little bit in a different way with row houses, you know, that when, when people like the row house developments where they have a way of saying that, oh, like, a good example is, is classics, Station 361, not far from where I live. They can say like, I live in the blue one, okay? You know, I mean, it's because, you know, there's something, or I live in the tall yellow one. You know, they're with, with, you know, these kind of holes in front and stuff like that. You know, the fact that, you know, people can identify something by something unique that gives a sense of place and purpose to it, you know, I mean, helps, all of those together help build a community. And I don't hear the question being asked, and I think it should be asked.
I think we do try to address that in terms of like, you know, you mentioned all the richness of detail and how we can add that layer to, to these developments. It's usually the last thing we're talking about, because we're talking about mass and, and form and things, but we try to stress that. And the public interface, you know, the walkability and walking past something, that's where we spend a lot of time in these developments. But you know, there's higher density, you know, it's because every, they got to repeat everything, proficiency, saying that's why you get these block, everything just stacks. So once you start breaking that, that stacking, costing them more money and the articulations. So that's the puzzle, that's the trick, that's the code they have to break to get, you know, they have to pick their spots on where they do that. And that's why I say it's the content. But I love the, yeah, you referenced the Franklin, yeah, Franklin Street?
Yeah.
That's the first project I reviewed here eight years ago. And, you know, I can look back at that. And that was because of the scale too. It fit really nicely in there. And then there was huge setbacks and big balconies. And then besides the character of the arches, just, and then, you know, it worked, right? Sometimes that all works.
A good thing about it is just, you know, if you look at the Franklin Street like balconies, for instance, I mean, you know, like, one of the things that, that, you know, puts some edge on me when I go places, like, when things look, look, and they're just so obviously fake.
Yeah.
Okay? Like the fake balcony versus the real balcony in the Franklin Street apartment, right?
Yeah, but you see how much space it dedicated.
Yeah, you know, that's true.
And once in a while, we get those kind of projects. So that's the thing to do.
So David, maybe with something like, because one of my concerns, I, the blockiness doesn't bother me. What does bother me is I think that these buildings might not age quite so well. And you're seeing it more with, when I go back and look at the crossings, that stucco now already looks much older than 20 years old. And so what, what worries me more is that, are we going to look through and see, you can, you'll be able to tell which buildings were ones with a higher quality material that don't have those kind of amusement park experiences.
The interesting thing is that, we talked about sort of experimenting in innovative materials, but those are actually the riskiest sometimes because there's, there can be less, less assurance of longevity. And even sometimes materials that end up being trusted and frequently used, for some reasons, sometimes unknown reasons, end up, end up not being those. And so, you know, developers and designers are, are sort of stuck looking, trying to find what the next option is. So it, it can be, I mean, I don't want to use it as an excuse, but there, it can be complicated, but I, I agree, sort of finding the right materials that have richness and sort of come across as having sort of solidness and quality is-
Sustained factor. So. So for, for question number three, are there any other strategies the commission would like to see added or modified?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the ones in, in italics, I thought were, were, there were specificities in, in question two that really touched on those. And, I mean, in fact, I don't know if it saves time for me to say, it sounds like the, the other bullets that are not italicized seem to be direction that, that EPC supported tonight around, you know, being sensitive to transitions, transitions into existing neighborhoods, even when the, the development itself is sort of not in that neighborhood and wanting to see more traditional elements, but, but still sort of the intent being, you know, pedestrian walkability throughout, wanting to see more, more traditional styles or these styles that are more contextual to the existing neighborhoods and, and the projects that are occurring within those neighborhoods, whether they're our houses are higher density. Does that sound accurate?
Commissioner Ramirez.
So I, I agree with that, but I, I don't have a good way of expressing this, but anecdotally, I feel like much of the concern I've heard about is in places like El Camino, which is sensitive, sensitivity to transitioning to existing neighborhoods makes sense and I, I generally agree with that. But I think also finding some way- But I think also finding some way to increase the diversity of style along El Camino is important. And that's, that's, that's different from sensitivity to existing neighborhoods. But I don't have a good way of saying that in a nice and concise direction.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if, if these two were in a cage match, diversity of style and transitions to neighborhood, which one would win in your mind, just out of curiosity?
Very subjective, but I, one of the things I like about single-family neighborhoods, precisely as Commissioner Cox was saying, is everything is different. You know, you walk down and it's eclectic and each place has character. Sometimes good character and sometimes bad character, but I like that. And I've lived next to the crossings, I like, I like the crossings conceptually, but it's all the same. You know, there's no, there's nothing unique about each individual building. And I don't necessarily want to suggest that everything has to be unique, but some level of difference or interest, I think, goes a long way.
And at my meeting, speaking to El Camino's corridor itself, right? You're talking about diversity within that corridor as opposed to the transitions from.
And I think we've sort of talked through that there are different ways of establishing transitions that you can use, you know, forms that are familiar that have a different character, for instance. And it sounds like this body is open to that as sort of a middle ground, perhaps, between those two potentially competing interests.
Or just even saying that sometimes that is a trade-off, right?
And we should acknowledge it, make a decision.
That I imagine would be done on a project-by-project basis. The second, first, what is it, first and third, Wednesday?
Second and fourth, whatever.
Wednesday?
Yeah, second and fourth.
We're going with second and fourth. Second and fourth, okay. So you draw. Yeah, this is the third, isn't it?
The first and third tradition.
First and third, okay, it is first and third. First and third, Wednesday. You had a really long night, couple nights, and so I just want to be sensitive. I really, I think that we've given you answers enough that you could probably go back, so.
I think that, yeah, no, definitely you provided a good summary, just to go. Eric Meyer, and I think that's the feedback we can carry forward as far as potential tweaks to our design review process, or really sort of support for many of the things that we've been trying to do already, and as well as some things to look at as far as potential, some bigger work plan items. Have to do a lot of this more as far as that we make those happen, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for having me. Of course, I'm staying late. And the last item on our agenda, our other committee reports, some staff updates. Martin sent around a list of what our upcoming meetings are, so if he didn't, he'd send that out. If you have any questions, please check your email. Seeing none, I will adjourn the meeting at 10:30.